Alexander Stein.
Yo, counsel, it's me, Alex Stein. Hey, Mayor Johnson. I know a lot of people right now are criticizing you because you're going through a terrible divorce and your wife Nikita is accusing you of sleeping with your staffer Mary Albana. And Mary Albana was your chief of staff and then you went and paid her $100,000 after you after she was your chief of staff. But what's funny about this is like, I don't think it's bad. I think it's good. Because all the top politicians have cheated. Bill Clinton, Monica Lewinsky. So you hooking up with their chief of staff, according to your wife, not me, in your public divorce. This is good for your political career. I know you switched from liberal to Republican and now you've gotten all this support, but you don't have to grab them by the P. You know what I mean? You don't have to go full Republican. What you need to do is you got to respect your wife, because I don't think Mary Albana will be a good stepmama. And you're giving her hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's ridiculous, because you know, I do think that cheating is bad personally. But I think for politics, it's probably good, Mayor Johnson, that you did this. And listen, I'm Team Nikita. You know I'm Team Nikita all day long. And you know Nikita is not lying, because she had that Ring doorbell camera where she supposedly caught you with your chief of staff. And then you had this relationship, according to you, you said that you'd done it a dozen times in your court proceedings. So this is all on record. You had Tim Rogers from the D, whatever that stupid magazine he's from come and testify, because he supposedly had inside information of your divorce. So this is really messy. It's just funny. You're typical of a politician. And now I understand probably why your hair is balding so bad, because you're probably really stressed. You're dealing with all of these, your staffer, you're taking your staffer to your house. You're sleeping with her. Not according to me, according to Nikita Johnson, your wife, your wife, the mother of your children, that you do not respect enough. The same house where you put your little kids to sleep at night, you're taking your staffer there and you're sleeping with her, according to Nikita. This is not according to me. This is all in the court documents. So you're going through a messy divorce. And I just want to say that a person that would cheat on his wife that he has kids with is probably a scumbag, probably not a good guy. And if he would cheat his wife, he'd probably cheat the city. And then on top of that, after he gets caught cheating on the girl, then he goes and gives her $100,000. Because Mary Albana runs a group called Adept Political Consulting. And so then you gave her $100,000. Maybe you gave her, and I'm just speculating this, I don't know, maybe you gave her the money so she wouldn't tell on you the fact that you guys were having an affair. I don't know this. I'm just speculating this. I'm just a concerned citizen worried about the mayor. But you know, I'm Primetime 99, so always end with a song. Nikita Johnson, Nikita, I know you miss Eric's Chiquita, but there's other bananas. I can be your manna. I will be the dad to your little babies. I'll be stepdad. So Nikita, call me. I want to treat you right. I'm not going to cheat on you, Nikita. I'm not going to sleep with my chief of staff. I'm a pimp on a blimp, Nikita, but I'm not a scumbag. So I'm doing this for you, Nikita Johnson. We stand Nikita Johnson. No cheating allowed. You're scumbag. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, children of all ages, welcome to Primetime with Alex Stein. I'm your host, Alejandro Stein, and we have an incredible episode for you this evening. We have Jamison Ellis, who's running against my arch nemesis, Dan Crenshaw, coming on over Skype to tell us about his campaign to take down that evil, evil congressman from Texas, Dan Crenshaw. But before we get to Jamison, I want to welcome on the one, the only, the coldest ass riding mofo that I know in the world, Brandon Buckingham. Brandon, welcome to the show.
Thanks for having me, brother. What a pleasure. What a setup.
I know. Are you, are you impressed by the pimp on a blimp? You're welcome to the blimp.
This is unreal. We have like a $50 billion studio we're in right now.
I know. Hey, only the best for a pimp like me.
Official.
Official, like a referee's whistle. All right. So Brandon, let's get into it. You, do we have the CNN clip?
Yeah, we do.
We won't start with that, but I just want to get into that. Brandon, the reason why I like you and the reason why I wanted you on my show is not just because we're friends, but we also, we met on the fish tank. But I want to have you on because you make incredible content, such good content, that you're getting the ire of the Clinton News Network, CNN.
My biggest fans. I just got opened up Twitter one day and people were blowing me up, saying that Twitter shit, that CNN shit on me. So I went and watched it. And yeah, they were talking, they did a video in Kensington, Philadelphia, about a month after I did.
And tell them where Kensington is the biggest drug open air den in the world in Philadelphia, right?
Biggest east coast drug opener drug market, really bad trank problem, making people's flesh rot off necrosis. And yeah, they went there after I went there, did the same thing I did. And then at the end of their video said, there's a problem with influencers exploiting the people of Kensington. And then showed a picture of me and my friend Tommy G.
Let's play that CNN clip. Wow, let's see.
But that has also brought negative attention. A morbid curiosity mixed with social media has created a dystopian absurdity.
Wow, look at them. They're just bashing you all because you're talking about the open air drugged in. So tell us a little bit about what you saw. Was it just people having flesh eating diseases from trank?
Yeah. So the, in Kensington, Philadelphia, there is police everywhere, but they're, I don't know what they're doing, because on the streets, they're lined with people shooting up intravenous drugs. And there's rotting flesh everywhere. Like essentially, you shoot up trank anywhere in your body and it goes to your extremities and starts to rot your knuckles or your ankles, your legs. You get infections and you have these giant fleshless patches.
Why do they still do it? I wonder, like, why not just do fentanyl or whatever? Fentanyl, I mean, I know tranks, fentanyl mixed with speed mixed with, what is it? I don't, I don't even know what trank is. I know it has fentanyl in it, but what is it mixed with? Do you even know?
It's a dissociative anesthetic, like a horse tranquilizer. It's essentially causing them to feel more dopey. That's why they're mixing it up with the trank, more dissociative, higher. So it's just like telling someone who's struggling with drug addiction, like, hey, get less high. They're going to be like, no, regardless of.
Rank Jimmy, do you know where to get any trank, Jimmy?
Uh, no.
Look at that haircut. That looks like, I've seen some people on trank with that same hairstyle.
Holy shit.
I mean, I think I was dyed with.
Jimmy, tell them why your hair looks like that.
Cause he's, he's the guy Fieri 10 years on trank.
He's gay Fieri. No gay jokes allowed.
So we had a guest on last night with a peculiar haircut. It was a reverse mohawk with frosted tips essentially. And Alex jokingly said, oh, we get a $500 super chat, I'll make Jimmy get that haircut. And I said, yeah, haha, because we've never gotten more than $100 super chat.
And immediately like.
In two minutes, we got a 500. Who has that kind of money to blow and be like, haha, I'm just going to mess with Jimmy, make him get a stupid fucking haircut.
I know, guys, go buy $500 worth of Casper coffee with my promo code too. Please, if you're that rich. Okay, so Jimmy agreed to do the reverse mohawk.
So we're at the end of the show. Alex is going to be near my head with a razor, which is very dangerous.
Manscaped, brought to you by Manscaped. You guys see that?
So that's supposed to shave your pubes. I hope you didn't shave your pubes before the show.
Oh, I definitely did. And not, I mean, I definitely did. This is definitely, let's not talk about it too much, but yes, this is Manscaped.
Lawnmower 2.0.
This is the lawnmower 2.0.
And you're using promo code Buckingham at checkout.
Promo code, uh, Alex.
If you want 10% extra, 10% off, you use code Buckingham.
We have, we get 25% off.
Oh, whatever, dude.
Manscaped. Okay.
But for, at the end of the show, he's going to give me the reverse mohawk. So stick around. And we got Matt Campbell coming back on to laugh at me.
Matt Campbell, his brother died in 9/11. His brother's name Jeff Campbell is on the 106th floor and got hit by a plane.
Holy shit. Shout out to him or sorry?
Shout out to Jeff, I guess. Rest in peace.
Rest in peace.
Take a moment of silence. I'll just let the, let the Manscaped. Manscaped moment of silence. Okay. All right. Um, let's get back to the show. So Brandon, you're all the way in Dallas. You've been doing some great work. What do you think about Texas compared to the rest of the state and the rest of the country, excuse me, the rest of the country that you've been unseen?
Texas seems awesome. I really like Texas. I like the gun ownership out here is good. I was just in San Antonio with Donut Operator Brandon Herrera, some of the gun tubers out there.
Are guns good though? Are you very pro 2A?
Um, yeah, I'm pro being able to have guns. Cause I mean, so I did so many videos in the hood, right? And all the gang members I've met, I would say a very, very low percentage of them have illegally, you know, registered firearm.
I know, but they all have guns though, right?
Yes, they already have guns, whether they're illegal or illegal, they're going to have them. So it's like, I want one.
I was exposed to guns at an early age in college, especially when I would go to drug dealers' houses, they would always have guns. They used to kind of scare me.
Are you anti-gun?
No, I like guns. I just would be scared that I'm buying fentanyl with a guy with a big gun.
Yeah.
I prefer my fentanyl dealer not have a gun.
We have fentanyl bullets.
Oh, that.
Fentanyl blow dart.
Or not fentanyl, they, what's the, what is, what saves you? The Narcan, you need a Narcan bullet. Right to your heart, that would save you. No, but on a serious note, I mean, guns are very important. I think the reason why, like, we have so many mass shootings is because the mental health crisis, not because of the guns, you know what I mean? I think it's very obvious that we're over prescribing stuff. What do you think about that? Like all these school shooters and they always were on the FBI's watch list. You notice that?
Yeah. And it seems like a lot of them is, uh, they write manifestos, they make it very publicized. Seems like they're requesting for attention typically.
Very weird.
Yeah. But I don't know, Texas is so different. I was in San Antonio, then Austin, now I'm in Dallas. They're all very, very different cities.
What'd you do in Austin?
Austin, I was just.
Cold ass riding?
Yeah, just cold ass riding a little bit, visiting.
What does cold ass riding mean? Because Jimmy doesn't know Jimmy, my producer, he went to Princeton, he's an idiot. And he thinks he's really smart. You know how Jimmy's an idiot? He's letting us shave his head for $500 that he doesn't even get to keep.
Yeah.
I don't even get to keep it technically. It's a Blazes money, but we do appreciate it. But Jimmy went to Princeton. He's one of these Ivy League, what do you call it, Jimmy? Homosexual?
Cock suckers.
Scholars?
Oh, scholars. That's what it is. Yes. He's one of these Ivy League scholars. But I know that you have a similar disdain for these Ivy League a-holes. Is that correct?
I think if you're going to go anywhere and you're going to give someone a hard time, a place like Princeton or Harvard or Wall Street would be like one of the best places.
That is the best place to troll. Well, I just got in trouble because I was kind of trolling young girls. People didn't like that. They were that young. When I say young girls, they're like college age staffers.
That's a crazy sentence. People are mad at me. I'm trolling young girls. I don't know.
I know. That dude, that was a crazy sentence. Do not clip that sentence and do not share that. Okay. My point is, I got in trouble because I misspoke to some ladies. I asked them some uncouth questions. People didn't really like that. So like, oh, these are young staffers working on a campaign. But when I go to like a college campus, people love it when you make fun of like Ivy League, like at Berkeley, you know, tease some students there, people like that. So tell us, what did you do at Harvard? And let's play that clip as we watch it. Tell us what's going on.
Uh, so I went to Harvard with my friend Brody TV, who is a YouTuber. He's an absolute menace. And we just went there to, you know, fuck about. I either do serious videos or funny videos and we want to do a funny one. So.
Were they all Asian? Is everybody tattoo Asian out there?
Like, only like 99%. A lot of Asians.
What is.
Great time to talk about Asian privilege, Alex.
And she goes to Harvard, that woman goes to Harvard?
Uh, yeah, I guess so. A lot of them didn't speak English. I guess there's like.
You're kidding? Most of the students didn't even speak English?
Ton of them didn't speak.
Well, the girl that went to Harvard from my school is named Emma Woo was Asian. She was like top of our class. I remember she used to, I used to always Emma Woo, I used to always ask her for mechanical pencils and she used to always say no.
She didn't fuck with you?
No, she did not. The valid story, she did not. Ooh, she's eating McChicken's. Okay. So what just happened in that video? She's talking about McChicken's. They eat McChicken's in Harvard?
I was talking about how expensive the dollar menu at McDonald's has gotten instead of a dollar for.
It doesn't exist anymore.
It's $3.49 for a McChicken.
Uh, well, let me, I hate to be this guy. I hate to be this guy, Brandon. Hate to be this guy because I like you so much, but as you can tell, I'm a portly fella. And any portly fella has a McDonald's app on his phone. I love the McDonald's app. So you are paying $3.69 for a McChicken, right?
$3.49.
$3.49. If you get the app, you get the app, you're going to have a little thing on here, rewards and deals. You're going to be able to get the McChicken for much less. I'm just saying, for the people.
How cheap.
No, I mean, let's see, let's see. Uh, I mean, I have tons of reward points. I'm a McMillionaire almost. I almost have a million, a McMillionaire points. It's going a little slow because my wifi, I have AT&amp;T. Did you see the AT&amp;T outage? That did mess me up. Okay. So let's go to order. Let's go to deals. Let's see what kind of deals we got on the app today. They change. They, they go in and out.
The audience is fervently waiting.
No, they want to know. So 20% off any purchase, $5 or more, $1 any size soft drink, $2 any size fries, 150 breakfast sandwich. So you just, you just pop that 20% off. You're saving money McDonald's way.
McChicken's only 3.05 now.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm just sick of everybody talking about this. Go get the McDonald's app if you're going to eat it. Everybody talks shit about McDonald's. Oh, it's so gross. Oh, it's genetic, what is it? Uh, genetically modified crap. Yes, so what? It tastes delicious. Whoo, oh man, I should have taken my medicine before the show.
See, Alex buys it in bulk and he just keeps it on his shelf because it stays good for a year. It doesn't rot.
It doesn't. Do you have any shell shock CBD, Jimmy?
Like on me right now?
Yes.
I should.
I'm feening.
I mean, when, should we do the reverse? Casper coffee just lean into it?
Oh, yes. Lila, get on set. Lila, Lila, Lila. Guys, whenever I'm feeling like a little jittery and I need a little pick me up, I'm a little tired, just come on set. We have the best coffee in the world. That's right. Lila, tell them about Casper Coffee.
Casper Coffee is amazing. Um, it'll make you grow taller if you start drinking it, which is why I started to drink it. And as you guys can see, I'm nearly six foot four. So drink this coffee if you want to get taller and stronger, get some muscles.
Look at those muscles. Casper Coffee, it doesn't have protein, but it has some other stuff that's, uh, we're not allowed to say on YouTube.
Drink your coffee.
Drink it. All right. Get out of here, Lila. Thank you, Lila.
We got two super chats and we got to go to our other ad read.
What, what?
So two super chats from the same guy, guy named Burner.
Two $20 super chats?
Yeah, both $20.
Damn.
Uh, one, I pay two times my car value in insurance in a year. Cops are men with guns. Okay? And then the other one is max extraversion, max purity, max expression, and helping others without personal weird harm, soul harm. I think that guy's on some trank that you were talking about, because that doesn't make any sense.
That guy's been smoking some CBD himself. All right. Now we got to do a pure health ad read. Is that correct?
Yes.
How's your health, Brandon? You look thin. You look good.
Yeah, I'm spry.
Gosh, he is spry. He's a champion wrestler. Tell them a little bit about your wrestling background.
Wrestled for 17 years, placed in the state of Maryland, was ranked in college NCAA.
Damn. He, we did wrestle and he kicked my ass. He pinned me. Uh, he did wrestle me. Maybe we'll wrestle later, but I don't want to get pinned again. But my health is not as good as yours, but I do have a little secret, a little shortcut. I like to call liver health formula. That's right, guys. It's 2024 and you must start taking care of your liver right now more than ever. Why, you ask? Because the latest data from the American Heart Association indicates that adults with a fatty liver were 3.5 times more likely to have heart failure than those without. The American Liver Foundation says that 100 million Americans have a fatty liver. That means people are at risk. You could be at risk. We literally throw everything in our livers, cholesterol, alcohol, toxins, Tylenol, statins, cigarettes, vapes. Can you show them the vape that you throw at your liver? Can we get a vape hit?
A vape hit?
Yeah, see?
This guy's so fucking pro, dude. It's crazy.
For your liver, look, you need it for your liver. Is that good for your liver? No, no. You throw that at your liver?
He gave me this to hit. I don't even fucking.
Yeah, I did. And that actually has a little trank in it. But you can vape all day. You can vape all day. And if you take liver health formula, it's going to get rid of that sluggish fatty liver that makes us gain weight and lose energy. For decades now, your liver has helped you with over 500 key functions every single day of your life. It's time you start helping your liver. There's a solution, guys. It's called liver health formula. It's an all natural supplement, which contains 11 clinically proven botanicals that help recharge and protect your liver. So if you're looking to ignite your fat burning metabolism, boost your energy and transform how you look and feel, guys, go try liver health formula today. And when you do, you receive a free bottle of our blood sugar formula to reduce those sugar cravings. That's right. You get that for free when you order today, guys. So try liver health formula by going to getliverhelp.com/alex to claim your free bonus gift. Let's get liverhelp.com/alex. Go get that free bonus gift. All right. How was that?
How do you do it?
I don't know. I'm sweating. The AC doesn't work here. I can't, I can't freaking breathe. All right. Now our next guest, our next guest is running in a race for congressman. What's the district number, Jimmy?
I don't know.
Gosh, you're such an idiot sometimes. He's running against Dan Crenshaw, the one, the only outlaw politician. Jamison Ellis, Jamison, welcome to the show, my friend.
I know. I definitely appreciate you being on. So just to answer your question, it is congressional district two. Last thing I want to say, just really quick, is I'm a little disappointed I'm not there live, because I was actually going to bring you a framed picture of AOC signed, uh, my big booty Latina.
No, I need that picture. I need as much AOC memorabilia as possible. I love her so much. I just think about her at night. I think about her in the morning. Think about her a lot, Jamison. But on a serious note, dude, you're running for freaking Congress against Dan Crenshaw, who is a military industrial complex owned puppet for the deep state and for the NWO. How do you beat a guy like that when he's so connected to all these terrible evil people that are in power?
Well, I mean, the reality is I don't beat them. Uh, the people do. And, and I can tell you that, uh, this district is fed up. And I think we're seeing it all over Texas. We're seeing it all over the country, how disenfranchised the American people feel. These supposed representatives, they can't truly represent us because they're so dad gum disconnected. And so, you know, if, whenever we win on March the 5th, it won't be because I'm so great. A, it's going to be because God had his hand on this race. And it's also going to be because the people are fed up.
Well, let's just ask nuts and bolts question. How much does Dan spend on his campaign?
Uh, two years ago, whenever we first ran, he raised about between nine and 10 million and then he spent between seven and eight.
Well, he probably, he probably spent all that money giving to his friends. Who knows? What do you think he spent all that money on?
I mean, I have no idea. I know some of it probably went to Pink Cilantro, his wife.
Exactly. Pink cilantro, her company, duh. That's where it goes. If anybody looks into it, you got to look into Pink cilantro. This is all out in the open. But I mean, he does raise all this money and then somehow he spends it all too by giving it to these companies like Pink cilantro. Okay. Sorry to cut you off. Keep going. So he raised 800, or he raised eight million, spent like seven. So you don't know how much he's going to spend on this campaign roughly?
Yeah. I mean, last time I actually checked his FEC reports, uh, he was at roughly about 2 million and I haven't checked it here recently. Uh, I think that he's struggling a little bit. Um, but hey, we all are. And so, but I also think it's a reflection of just how fed up, again, that, that people are. Being a conservative, we want conservatives in office that are going to represent us. If you're going to run in a conservative district and call yourself one, then you need to be one. And so, but here's, here's the thing that I can tell you being out the polls, because we're in the middle of early voting right now. I'm not meeting hardly anybody that is supporting Dan. As a matter of fact, we've actually gone to a few businesses to put up four by eight signs, uh, the four foot by eight foot signs. And they're not even asking permission from some of these businesses. So we're actually going in and talking to them and they're like, yeah, I'll go take it down. You put one of yours up. It's, it's absolutely nuts.
So they're, I mean, that's kind of scary. They're just putting up those signs like that. But hey, tell me this, when we talk about Dan Crenshaw, like for me, he made a six minute video or maybe it was 10 minute, 10 minute, I forget how long it was, talking about how Delta wouldn't let his wife on because of her puppy or whatever. I know. I mean, I'm saying that video went viral. Why hasn't he spoken up for all the January Sixers? Why hasn't he spoken up about the crisis at our border and actually done something about it? Why do you think Dan Crenshaw would make a 10 minute video about his wife not getting let on a Delta airplane? Instead of making a 10 minute video talking about why January Sixers are being thrown under the jail, giving max sentences for misdemeanor crimes?
Ironically enough, that video came out whenever I was in the middle of calling his ass out for refusing to debate me, for not showing up to a debate. I was at the Montgomery County Eagle Forum. I was on stage for 45 minutes, just taking questions from the audience. And, uh, and then I challenged him officially to a debate and he just refused it. I spent about three weeks calling him out daily. And if you go look in his comments, it doesn't matter if it's on, on Facebook. Actually, on Facebook, he had a meet and greet that was supposed to take place last night. And it got canceled because on Facebook, on X, he gets ratioed all the time. It's something different whenever it's happening on Facebook. And almost every single comment, I'll say 98% of the comments on his meet and greet said, we're voting for Jamison. We're voting for Jamison.
On Facebook, because YouTube, I mean, excuse me, on Twitter, it's out in the open, but on Facebook, the only people that, that are getting his feed are people that liked it already. So it's hard to get a lot of hate on Facebook. So that's a really big red flag. Wow. Okay. So now.
No pun intended, right?
Yeah, no pun intended. But this is my freaking interaction with Dan Crenshaw. And this is why he won't debate, because he's a hothead. Now watch this video and watch him lose his cool. Have it on tape. See, this guy's still lying. I bet he's out here still lying. You're so full of it, dude. That's why you're going to lose, dude. I know, I know you don't know, you don't think that. It's going to happen, guys. This guy's a traitor. You're a globalist. Yeah, I'm an adult calling you out. This, you lost your eye for weapons of mass destruction that didn't exist and you don't even call it out. Weapons of mass destruction that didn't exist, bud. You know that. Let me hear you say something about that. Well, can we talk about that?
He's trying to grab my thing. Look, you're too slow. He's too slow Navy SEAL.
It's funny, Dan, how you said you're tall. Yeah, I'm small, but I'm so much taller than you, Dan. I'm so much bigger than you. You're just a little, you're a little sad little boy.
This is the guy who tells veterans that their, that their service.
Yeah, because those are weapons of mass destruction that didn't exist. I'm anti-war.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm anti-war because I don't believe. Did you guys find any weapons of mass destruction?
As a matter of fact, we did.
Oh, yeah, right. Weapons of mass destruction, this guy.
You're actually going to go down this route, Alex.
Yeah, because we don't have any weapons of mass destruction.
Like a fool right now. You're telling veterans, not just me.
Ukraine. We have homelessness. We have so many issues here in America. He cares more about Ukraine.
You're disgusting.
You guys service those ways.
You're disgusting.
For globalists and bankers.
You are the modern day version.
I'm the modern day version. You worry more about Ukraine than our border. You care more about, he cares more about Ukraine than he does about America. So you're a globalist. Why don't you take care of America? You don't care. That's your problem, Dan. You don't care about America. You don't care about Texas.
You're disgusting.
Do you think there's an invasion? Is there an invasion on our border right now? Is there an invasion on our border right now? Yes, he says, yes. So that's why he doesn't want to argue because he gets hot and, uh, you know, he gets hot and heavy really fast.
Well, you know, it's, the thing that's sad about that video is he talks about, you know, how you're supposedly coming against veterans, but let's, let's talk about some legislation really quick that he's actually voted for, where he's legitimately coming against veterans, like the National Defense Authorization Act from just a couple of years ago. He voted yes on it. Whenever there was an amendment that was made to defund military vax mandates and it was voted down and he still voted yes on the bill with those military vax mandates in there.
He didn't care. I know. I'm just saying, he didn't care about the soldiers right then and there. I mean, he has no integrity. Go ahead. Sorry. Uh, cut you off.
No, it's, it's all right. So, so the red flag laws, right? So he voted for the FY22 National Defense Authorization Act when it had red flag laws slapped on veterans.
And tell the people why red flag laws are so bad? Because your wife can say you're mad or you're crazy and then they can just go into your house and search and take all your guns?
Yeah, you're basically convicted of a crime or before crimes ever been committed. You're stripped of due process. So they take the guns and then you have to prove your innocence. It's not innocent until proven guilty. It's guilty until proven innocent. And, uh, you know, and this is something that he's, that he's been for, we come to find out ever since 2019. And, uh, you know, me being a second amendment purist, you know, when I read the Bill of Rights, they place restrictions on the government, not the citizen. And so that means the second amendment places a restriction on government, not the citizen. Those four words shall not be infringed. They either mean something or they don't mean anything. And so whenever you are talking to a seventh generation Texan like myself, who loves my guns, I grew up hunting. I have law enforcement in my family. I have military in my family. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a spit in the face. And so if he's willing to do that with the second amendment, what other amendments is he willing to do that with?
All of them. He would love the first amendment to be gone. He doesn't like free speech. Okay. We got a great super chat question. Jimmy, read it for Jamison.
Roosevelt Media News asks this, Jamie, do you support the right for Texans to vote on Tex-It?
Yes, 100%.
Okay, pretty awesome.
Would you like us to secede? I mean, everybody says that I am for Texas independence, but I mean, we'd be what, like one of the 27th most powerful country if we were our own country, something like that, or GDP?
Yeah. So, yeah. So here's the deal. I 100% support the right of Texans to vote on whether to secede or not. That being said, I, I am an American. I have, I have, you know, grandparents. I have generations that came before me that have seen war. I have generations that have came before me that have risked their lives for this country. I love my country. Now I love my state too. Don't get me wrong. But I don't think that we've done everything, uh, that we can possibly do to save our constitutional republic. And so I would like to fight for, which is why I'm part of Convention of States. I would like to fight for an Article Five Convention of States because that's the way that we can save this country. Uh, Tex-It to me is a last resort. I'm not for it, but I'm not against it. Right now, I'm kind of agnostic on it.
That's what I am. I like that, how you said that. I'm not for it, but I'm not against it. I like that, Jamison. That's really good.
But 100% Texans deserve the right to, um, to vote on it. And then let's, let's see what the majority of Texans, let's see how they feel about it, you know? And I think that could be very telling in one direction or the other.
Okay, we got Brandon Buckingham here. Brandon, do you have any questions you want to ask our esteemed, uh, politician, future politician?
Uh, is there anything that the American public does not know about Dan Crenshaw that you'd like them to know?
Yeah, that's a great question.
That's what I do.
Gosh, that's a good one.
Uh, honestly, there's probably a little too much. Um, and the reason why I say that is because, uh, uninformed voters, uh, it seems to be a, a plague. You know, I've always, I've always said that if we lose our country, it won't be because of corruption in the government. It'll be because of complacency in the electorate. For, for far too long, we've been gaslit by the political class into forgetting one of the most paramount phrases. into forgetting one of the most paramount, uh, phrases taken directly out of our declaration of independence. It says that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. And that's you. That's me. That's us. That, that's we, the people. And I, and I feel like there's a lot of people for, for decades that have forgotten that. We give power to the government as we, the people see fit. But, uh, you know, up until recently, it seems like people have said, well, what's the government going to do for me? Now, uh, you know, what I'm seeing is I'm seeing a, a revival of people saying, wait a minute. It's government's the problem. They're not the solution and it's up to us, we, the people to take that back. Now, back to the original question, there still are a lot of uninformed voters. They look at somebody like my opponent and they say, man, he's a, he's a Navy SEAL. He served this country with valor and with courage. The, the problem is, is that so what? That was before he decided to run for office. I honor and respect his service as a Navy SEAL. I do not honor and respect the manner in which he has represented his district, including myself, because I'm not just an opponent. I'm a constituent. I do not appreciate the way that he's represented us in office.
Well, that's a great answer, but you know what he meant to say? He supposedly does stuff behind his wife's back. Allegedly a little birdie says, that's what they say. Uh, Jameson can't vouch for that, but that's, I didn't, I just heard that on the radio, I think, on us coming into work today. Now, uh, Dan Crenshaw has a lot of skeletons in his closet, but okay. So Jameson, before we go, before I let you go, tell the people how they can support you and how they can get involved in this race to help you beat this terrible globalist named Dan Crenshaw.
No, I definitely appreciate that. So there's a couple of things I would ask of, of people. Um, number one, um, go to firedancrenshaw.com. This is actually.
Everybody go to firedancrenshaw.com right now. Sorry. Go there. We, we don't like Dan Crenshaw. Go to firedancrenshaw.com. Sorry. Sorry to cut you off, Jameson. Keep going.
No, it's okay. This is a site that, uh, that was brought to my attention here a couple of weeks ago. It's very well put together. Highly encourage people to share that, um, to, to read over it. There's proof of his votes. Like it's, it's just, it's, it's a phenomenal site.
George Santos had a more conservative voting record in Congress than Dan Crenshaw.
Yeah. And he was, he was ousted for it. So the second thing that I would, that I would, uh, ask is we're up against establishment money. Now, most of my donors are all small dollar donors and I'm not asking people to give the maximum, which is $3,300. Although if you want to give the maximum, absolutely. I'm not going to tell you no. But i- if everybody that's within earshot, everybody that's watching the show would go to jamesoneellis.com. It's Jameson, just like the whiskey, only I won't leave you with a hangover the next morning. But J A M E S O N E L L I S dot com. And, uh, and click on the button that says donate, give $5, give $10, give $20 or 3,300. But every little bit helps. And just because we're already in early voting, doesn't mean that those donations go to waste. We still have a fight ahead of us and, uh, March the 5th is primary voting day. And I also want to say that March the 5th is also the day that we finish in 2024, what we started two years ago in 2022. So I want to ask each and every person to join the fight, make a contribution and let's fire Dan Crenshaw, hire Jameson.
Go to jamesoneellis.com, but also go to firedancrenshaw. A lot of good information there. You're going to really learn a lot about Dan. Okay. I mean, I want you to win. Obviously we got your back. We're going to stay in touch. When is early voting in? It's from the 20th to the 24th. Does it end tomorrow or Thursday or when is it? I mean, uh,
It actually, yeah, it actually ends on March the 1st.
Oh, so it's now until March 1st. Okay. Good. Okay. So, so we got some time.
Voting day is March 5th.
Well, you know, it's funny about the last election. You can only say so much, but did you know that Donald Trump won all 50 states when it came to in-person voting? Even California and New York and Joe Biden won all 50 states when it came to mail-in, mail-in ballots. So that shows you.
That doesn't surprise me.
I know.
He also won the votes that were never cast in the, in the first place.
Saying he got, the dead people got to vote for him. So, uh, that's what I'm worried about. I hope that freaking Dan Crenshaw is not talking to the CIA to somehow rig those machines like they did to Kerry Lake or whoever, Trump. I mean, it's just, it's not a fair fight. You have a big battle ahead of you, Jameson. Anything that we can do to help, please don't be a stranger. And is there any last things you want to say before you go?
No, just, uh, I, I appreciate the opportunity, Alex, to be on your show. Uh, you seem to have a lot of fun and you make me laugh a lot. Um, and so I just want to say thank you for allowing me to be on it.
Oh, thank you. No, I hate when people are nice to me. Don't be nice to me. Only be mean to me. Jameson.
Okay. Well, screw you then.
Thank you. That's what I like. Jameson. Listen, you are a badass for going against this guy. Win, lose or draw, you are, don't let anybody fool you. Just getting in the fight says a lot. So you're, you know, you're a real true badass in my book. So I'll talk to you soon, Jameson. Have a good one.
Thank you.
That guy's pretty badass. I hope he wins, but Dan Crenshaw, if, this is what they say, if in a way, I almost want Crenshaw, I don't want Crenshaw to win, but I almost don't mind Crenshaw being a congressman because they say he might run for governor of Texas. And this guy hates me, Crenshaw. And if he somehow became the governor because people are just idiots and might vote for him because he's conservative, he would ruin my life.
You think so?
The governor, I think could like, he's a congressman. A congressman really can't do much to like a citizen. I'm not even in his district. But I think the governor of Texas, Jimmy, could the governor of Texas screw me over?
Probably. He could probably convince some donors to screw you over.
Jimmy, you know who he, you know who he looks like? He looks like those twins. You know those twins that?
The TikTok twins?
The TikTok twins.
Oh, no.
You look like one of the TikTok twins.
I need, I need like the dangling one earring.
What are the, what's the, not the island boys, the other one, the guys.
TikTok in unison. We're the whatever the fuck.
We're the TikTok boys and yeah, that's what you look like. I don't, I wish.
That's not good at all.
You're married though, so it doesn't matter.
Uh, you know, still not good.
Well, did you know that there's a conspiracy, which I actually believe in that when women are dating a guy or married to a guy, that they purposely want them to look ugly? So other girls aren't attracted to them?
I've, I've heard that. That's not my wife.
How do you know? She's letting you shave your head, reverse a mohawk and dye it blonde.
I, I think, think she knew what I signed up for when I agreed to work for you. Just keep being nice to her and I, she won't divorce me.
I still think she doesn't mind if you look bad though. Like, does she make you go to the?
Well, well, here's the thing.
This is a perfect example. Carrie is beginning to exercise. You exercise too, but she doesn't like make you go exercise with her, right?
No, she doesn't force me.
That's what I'm saying. She kind of wants you to be a little fatter than her.
She's hitting the gym without you, right?
She goes to the gym all the time. She's a trainer. But that's what I'm saying. She wants you to get a little plump. So the girls don't look at you. She doesn't want you looking too lean, too cut up.
Well, so here's the thing. She knows what kind of game I have because I dated her. So she's not concerned.
She's not worried. You have no game. Yeah, that's true. I agree with Carrie a hundred percent.
That's why like I'm booking all these hot girls to come on the show. She's never gotten jealous once. And I thought it's because she trusted me, but it's actually because she thinks I'm a loser.
She thinks you're incapable.
Yeah. Jimmy was aversion until they got married.
Really?
I'm not even kidding. Jimmy, tell them.
He's a good Christian, yeah.
That is good. I actually, I make fun of him all the time. I do think that is good. I mean, I do also think that, um, you probably finished really quick. Did you finish really quick, Jimmy, the first time?
I, I don't, you know.
You could just say yes or no, then we'll change the subject. Oh, you need a lot of help. Wow.
Lot of instruction. She guided me and like, it's kind of like, I felt like, uh, I was a pilot when the, the pilot died and she was at traffic control. She was just like, all right.
These are his, these are his open mic jokes that he does and they're terrible.
At least he's not like the lecherous Dan Crenshaw.
Oh, he's not as, Jimmy's a great person. He's a great human being. He's a very pure blood. We actually accidentally did a demonic seance with, uh, this guy named Dunya. His mom's a voodoo priestess. And then our tricaster and everything got screwed up. Do you remember that, Jimmy?
Uh, I do. I was on vacation. I wouldn't have let you do that if I was here.
And then Jimmy had to come and bless the set and that kind of helped a little bit.
You voodoo curse your employee?
Well, we voodoo cursed, cursed the set. Like we got, like the monitors went out, the internet dropped off. No, I'm not even kidding. The server dropped. Like all of this stuff that's never happens. The YouTube's, the tricaster broke, the, the audio, like it was just a comedy of errors. All this stuff, all this bad stuff kept happening. So, all right, now we, we only have about 20 minutes left in the show, about 23 minutes. When should we do the head shaving, Jimmy?
Probably with 13 minutes left. Cause we want to, we want to get these reaction clips with Brandon. I want his thoughts.
So let's watch a few of these clips. So we want to do that at the very end of the show, the shaving the head. Are you excited to shave Jimmy's head?
I get a stroke. I can do it.
Yeah. We're all going to take a little stroke. Abel's going to take a stroke. I'm, we have different blade levels. So we got the manscape, but we have these attachments, if I can find them. See they're different links right here, pimp daddy. So we go a little higher, a little. How do I get it to turn on? Well, we have little guards, so we're going to be able to take turns shaving his head. We got, uh, we got all different shapes and sizes. So let's actually react to some of these clips. You see all these AI clips and now AI is racist as hell or anti-racist as hell?
Yeah. I've seen a bunch of that on Twitter.
They won't make a white person?
They won't? I don't, I don't know about that.
I, look at that. What does that say?
Make a picture of a ginger person. And it's a bunch of racially ambiguous people with red hair.
Yes, that's for real. And then it asked, and then there's some other even ones. Or do we have multiple clips?
Um, no, just says, but they asked to make a picture of a Viking and they gave black people with dreads.
They said, make a medieval British king. And it was, it was one white woman and three black guys.
Anthony Bourdain's dream has come true.
That was Anthony Bourdain's dream?
He said he wanted to live in a world where everyone was, there was no white people. Everyone was like gray or Milano, whatever the fuck he said.
Well, have you ever heard the conspiracy too? We talk a lot about conspiracies that if we lived long enough, we would all become one race and one color.
I mean theoretically, I think some people would hold out.
I know. I think there'd always be sleeper cells of like pure bloods, you know? You know, there's going to be some like.
Stein family will remain pure.
Not my family. My family, we're like mutts. We're all kind of mixed up, but I'm just saying there's going to be some strong, you know, Icelanders. There's going to be some Africans. There's going to be some Hispanics.
Habib Nurmagomedov is not fucking a Japanese woman or like a Nigerian.
Well, I don't know. He might, he might be with an Asian woman. I mean.
You think so?
You know, I don't know. Does Khabib, does he, is he married? Does he have a kid? I don't. But he doesn't like sleep around.
No, but I'm saying he's probably, his bloodline is going to remain like.
I think it'll stay pure.
Area of.
And we love mixed bloodlines for terms of service. We don't want pure bloodlines. This is not, we don't like World War II. We don't like anything. We, bloodlines are fine if they're mixed and can noodle. That's for terms of service.
You're such a good guy.
I know. I try to be. Okay. Now look at this satanic photo shoot from Barry Keegan.
What the fuck?
What is this all about, Jimmy? Why are you showing us your internet history?
What are we looking at?
Jimmy, can we show this on the show?
I have no idea.
Let's, let's not show that anymore.
It's catch up.
Who is that man doing that?
I know. What, what, maybe let's not show blood and gore on the.
That's what you do?
No, I don't even know who put that up.
This is your stuff?
I, they want me to react to this, but I don't even know how to react other than I think we're going to get terms of service. So let's, let's take down the satanic art. Okay. Now, look at the neural link. What do you think about Elon Musk putting a computer in your brain so you can get an erection?
I'm not letting, uh, Elon in my brain.
What if your Twitter just gets uploaded right to your eyeball? You just look in your eye.
And I could tweet from my, my brain?
Tweet from your brain.
It's going to go so good.
I would tweet better if it was stuck into my brain.
Sending them out all the time.
It wouldn't be, because I'm always doing text errors. I have fat fingers. So I'm always pressing the wrong button. If my brain could just be sending it out, um, that would be a lot better. Okay. Now.
Advertise?
Say that again.
They're going to advertise on that? Like I'm just going to wake up and then I'm going to have like an OnlyFans.
Like a Pornhub jerk mate. Welcome to jerk mate.
Like swipe it away and shit?
Yeah. That's the future. In the future, they do want you to live in a pod. They want to hook you up like to a machine, basically where you can ejaculate a thousand times a day. Have you never heard of this? Alex Jones talks about this. It's going to be like Ready Player One or something. You're going to be in a pod. It's the movie Vanilla Sky. So what happens is you're going to go to a clinic. You're going to say, you know, we don't have enough food. We don't have enough, like, the temperature is too bad. It's too hot. You have to live in a coffin apartment. Or you can come down to our clinic. We're going to hook you up to a tube and you're going to live in a virtual reality world where you can be the quarterback of the Dallas Cowboys, president of the United States, be a billionaire, and you can orgasm a thousand times a day.
Great come wars.
And people are going to sign up. They are.
That was a pretty convincing pitch right there.
Why not? Okay. Now let's actually get Brandon into the conspiracy hot seat. We always ask our guests these questions. When it comes to the terror attacks on September 11th, 2001, was the government involved? Was it an inside job?
You're asking me that?
Yes. Do you think 9/11 was an inside job, Brandon?
Uh, no. It's good.
Okay. Wrong. It was inside job perpetrated by our own government to start a never ending war in the Middle East and kill millions of Muslims for weapons of mass destruction that did not exist.
And who, who wanted America to do that?
Who wanted us?
And who benefits from us getting into a war on terror? What's the ancillary?
Uh, Saudi Arabia benefited, America benefited, Israel benefited. Uh, stop pointing at me when I say that word.
There you go.
Stop pointing at me when I say that. A lot of countries benefited.
Look, I'm putting my statement out there. There's no conspiracies.
And the poppy seeds in Afghanistan before the Fentanyl crisis. So we could sell that black tar heroin. That was part of 9/11.
Don't talk about my greatest ally, bro.
What? The poppy fields, the Afghani poppy?
All of it.
Well, now second hard question. 1969 through 1972 Apollo moon missions. Did America put a man on the moon? Yes or no?
I think we didn't because of the irradiation, the amount of lead that would have to be around the spacecraft.
He's a Van Allen radiation guy. I love you, Brandon. Finally you got one right. It would be impossible to go through the Van Allen radiation belt with the technology that we don't even have the capabilities to do it today. But go ahead. Let me hear your answer. Sorry.
Well, didn't Japan put out a statement that they want to do it sometime within the next like 100 to 200 years, put a man on the moon? How are, how are we so far ahead during the space race that we beat them to it by several hundred years? And there's also the stuff like in, in the images, some of the shadows don't line up and seem indicative of studio lighting. But again, I think we landed on it and I'm, I think it's great.
No, I love that answer. Obviously we did not land on the moon. I get a lot of heat for that. Now the third, the hardest question of them all. The question that the new world order wants to hide the most, a little thing called the ice wall. Do you believe that the earth is round or flat?
Do I think it's round or flat?
What's is it? What's the shape of the earth?
I, I think it's round.
Oh my. It's flat, dude.
Give me, tell me why, tell me why.
Well, because this is why. So we're on a ball supposedly, right? Do you know how big the ball is?
Not off the top of my head.
Around the equator, it's roughly 25,000 miles, roughly. It's like 24,900. So how fast does that mean it's spinning?
I don't fucking know.
That means it's spinning. If it spins one time a day, it's roughly going 1100 miles an hour. And then on top of that, it's orbiting the sun, 66,600 miles an hour. And then on top of that, the sun, the moon, the stars, we're moving through the Milky Way galaxy, 1.4 million miles, like in concert, right? So we're moving four different directions, but every single night, Polaris, the North Star is in the same spot. So I think that's kind of weird that we're moving all these different directions, yet we always have a star. But if you take pictures, I don't necessarily think the earth is flat, but I just don't think it's like what they tell us. You know, you know what I mean? I think there's like how the, I think there's something round about the earth, obviously, but I think there's like a firmament or something that protects us from the sun, moon and stars. Like the sun, moon and stars are suspended in the firmament, like the Bible describes.
Yeah, the earth could be flat. I wouldn't know that. I don't fucking know.
Jimmy knows. Jimmy went to Princeton. What's the shape of the earth, Jimmy?
It's a spherical.
Dumbass. All right. So.
He was the guy with blonde hair.
I got one. I got one for Brandon. What are your thoughts on aliens? Are they real or fake?
Aliens? I think they're real.
Hell yeah.
They have to be, but are they demons? Are they aliens from like outer space?
I don't think they're like inherently good or bad necessarily. I don't know enough to fucking say.
Alex, I have a question for Brandon too.
What is it?
Brandon, what's the angriest a person has gotten at you in one of your man on the streets?
Hmm. That's a good question. I typically don't make people very angry, but, uh, there was a crackhead in Jacksonville that was kept telling me he was going to get me in my Jacksonville.
Jacksonville.
Yeah. Jackson, Mississippi. And that, or you're in Jacksonville, Florida. Oh, that's where Jimmy is from.
He kept telling me he was going to get me and like, I'll get people like you. I'll get you. Uh, I don't know. I guess he was a little upset or maybe he was talking about raping me, if I can say that word, or wording me.
Probably trying not to say.
I apologize.
Graping.
Um, another person they got, someone fired shots whenever we were leaving O block. But no, I don't really have.
O block in Chicago, the, the most gangster block in the world arguably.
Yeah. I don't usually make people angry.
Though Alex can't relate.
I know. All I do is make, that's all my content.
We're just laughing. This guy's going off in these town hall meetings about this guy's wife and kids and his whole family structure and how it's degrading and.
And it has chief of staff, Mary Albana, got a hundred thousand dollar kickback when she left his chief, as a position of chief of staff. Then she created this thing called Adept Strategies, which is a political consulting firm. And then he gave her a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and $10,000. And then in the court proceedings this last Tuesday, not this week, but last Tuesday, it came out that the wife had walked in on them like multiple times in their house. And then in the court case, she said the woman's name, but she also put the Ring doorbell camera footage of them walking in the house and walking out of the house.
I mean, yeah.
Pretty, pretty, pretty bad. So guys, oh, let me react to this last clip. How smart is this woman right here? This Karen is the smartest woman I've ever seen. So she's mad at this crane. She got some bolt cutters and just started cutting the wires. How awesome is that? Brandon, now that's a real thug.
It's an American right there.
That is American. She was at January 6th.
Hell yeah. I was there all day. You know that?
Oh yeah. You stormed the Capitol.
Yeah. I stormed it. I busted shit up. I broke shit down.
Tell the people real quick, because the FBI is watching for sure. Uh, before we, uh, shave Jimmy's head, uh, FBI, this is Brendan Buckingham. I got his social and I got all of his information. If you'd like to arrest him, I get a $500 fines fee for every person I turn in.
Got you. So yeah, I stormed the Capitol with an armed militia of pro-American Trumpers. We tore the place up, fired heavy machinery, artillery in there, you know, slaughter.
But your video was used in some court cases.
No. I met with the FBI because they wanted to ask me if I had any information.
That's what it was. You met with them.
And I like tried to spin it into like, I'm an FBI detective and went around asking people in my town like, what were you doing last Tuesday? But yeah, I went there alone. I didn't have any connections and I didn't have any information. And if I did.
Did you go inside?
No. People are fucking walking around the Capitol building. I'm like, my instinct is I'm not going to do that. People are fucking walking around the Capitol building. I'm like, my instinct is I'm not gonna do that.
And so you could have walked in theoretically, were you in a?
They were letting fucking people in.
Well, my buddy was there, Lou Coffey. Now he's getting charged with assault because he held a, he held a crutch at him. He didn't actually go in. He was trying to go in, and he's gonna probably face 10 to 15 years potentially in jail.
Yeah, see, man, I, I didn't do that. I kept my distance.
No, it was probably.
I interviewed the person that had his feet up on Nancy Pelosi's desk.
Yeah, Richard Burnett, Big O. Yeah, he's a friend of, a friend of the show. We've, we've had Richard on this show.
Yeah, the vibe I got at January 6th, if I can say this, is, uh, was not like a super white supremacist, violent, angry mob. It was more just like people that were upset about the election and they were doing their form of whatever you want to call it protest.
Was it more like a concert festival, kind of like Juggalo bash, but not?
I've been more scared at the Juggalo gathering than I was on the front lines of January 6th. It just wasn't, like, I didn't realize how big of a deal it was at the time. Then again, I'm not the most political person, but yeah, I just, I'm like, holy shit, we're at the Capitol building.
Yeah, you didn't realize how mad.
And bleachers set up, because there was supposed to be like a speech in the coming days. So there was like, we're all on bleachers in the Capitol building. I'm like, oh, it's a fuck, they set this up. I don't know what the fuck it was.
Wow.
Yeah, there was people of all races, men, women. I didn't think it was what it, what it was now. They're saying it was like the next 9/11.
They said it was worse than 9/11?
Maybe I'm just a fucking idiot. I don't know.
No, you're not.
I was there all day. It didn't seem like that.
Wow, Jimmy, so we have a real January 6er on the set.
Yeah, watch the video. If you guys haven't seen it, it's definitely stifled an algorithm.
Actually, because now the show's about to take a really wild turn. Lila, Abel, come on set. Jimmy, come on down here. The time has come, but before we start this, Brandon, will you tell the people where they can find you and they can watch all of your videos on YouTube?
Uh, my main channel on YouTube is Brandon Buckingham. Second channel is The Buckingham Show. And you can hit me up on Instagram at Brandon underscore Buckingham if you want me to check anything out.
Okay, Mustafa, we need that chair right there. So, Brandon, you might not know this, but Jimmy is my producer. He is the one, here, Lila, we need to open one of these bags. I guess, so the camera can see you. Is that, did we, we didn't, I don't know if we?
Put a hole in there.
Yeah, let me put a little hole in here. So Jimmy said that he would shave his head. Do you need a microphone? Hurry, Jimmy. Alright, Jimmy said he would shave his head. Do we have Matt on the screen? Here, Lila, hold the mic for.
Okay. There you go.
Okay, can we see him? We want to be able, oh, we're blocking Brandon's camera, so maybe move forward, Jimmy.
I can move. You want me to stand up or no?
No, 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 here, go for, where, where should we go where we cannot? Okay, let's just go like this. I want to be able to see Brandon's reaction. Jimmy, face, face this camera. Like this? Okay, can you see Brandon now on the reverse camera?
Yeah, we got him.
Okay, you're right here. So now, guys, thankfully, we love Manscaped. Brandon, actually, stand up here. We're gonna, we're gonna all take swipes at his head. Okay, so let's start.
It has to go only down the middle, so the point is to do like a reverse mohawk.
Are you sure?
Yeah, it's right here.
So like that guy on the screen, that's who we're going for.
Damn, we're giving you the Jefferson?
Is that what it's called?
We're giving him the Jefferson, dude.
Just right down the middle, because it needs to be blonde on the outside.
Okay, we're starting with this guard. This guard's not that, this guard's a pretty big guard, so let's just try this. So, who, who, what was the guy's name? James, what was the guy?
Max Hines.
Max Hines. Thank you so much, Max Hines, for giving us this money so we can shave Jimmy's head. So I'll start off, let me, let me make sure I'm going right down the middle. Wow, look at this. Do not miss this. I want this on camera. Wow, hold on, this is... It's just a little right there.
It's only up from here, Jimmy.
It's only, oh. Yeah, hold on. Okay, guys, y'all want to take a strike? Okay, here, let me, let's, how does it look so far? Can you tell? Here, Abel, get a little bit in the middle. I'll get a shorter guard.
Just make it in the middle, middle.
And then you, let me get a little shorter guard.
You know, I went to barber school for this.
Wait, 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 wait.
You went to barber school?
Yeah, today's my final exam.
Wait, 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 it's a little longer. We want this to be long, so, so here, Abel, start. Let me go like this. Now y'all start cutting down the middle. Oh, that's good. Keep going.
What are you gonna do?
Okay.
I don't, I don't know.
Let's see Brandon here. Let's try to, let's.
My wife might leave me.
No, she's not. She's not. You're very successful. Okay, here, Brandon, why don't you get?
Is this success?
Yeah, this is success. Why don't you get a little in the middle? Remember, we want to, we want to try to keep the sides long.
Well, I'm sure people like you for your personality anyways, man. This isn't gonna be a big deal. Give it like?
This is not gonna be a big deal.
I don't even know you and you're being mean.
Give it like six months, you'll look normal again.
You're gonna look normal? Oh my gosh, it's starting to look like it. Is it, is it coming together?
Look at the volume.
Oh my god.
Look at it. It really started to look like it.
Okay, wait, let's do a posed picture.
Okay, go, say, sorry.
Yeah.
Do it. And I show his, oh my god, they started to look like it! Matt, okay, okay, hold on, we're almost done. Let's, uh, you're getting the hair.
I got bleached hair in my mouth.
I don't know. How, how do we make it?
A little bit more, like a little?
Yeah.
Take that off a little.
Well, I kind of like it kind of long right there, though.
Okay, well, that's good.
Oh my.
To be clear, you did shave your pubes with that.
Yes, this is the thing that I use to shave my pubes, but that's neither here nor there. That's good. That makes it better. Look at this back here. Kind of trim it, round it off.
Coincidentally, last time I saw you, we were shaving someone's head.
We were shaving Vance's head. It's crazy. Every time we get together. So Matt, what do you think? At home, how does it look?
I think it looks, it looks great. You can probably take a bit more off in the middle.
Let me get a little. Let me get a little.
What'd he say?
Yeah, he said we can take it a little bit down in the middle, and I think he's right about that. I think he's right about that. Oh my gosh. Okay, now.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
That's it. This wasn't the deal.
That's it. Now you're done.
Oh, man. It's a good texture.
Oh my god! Jimmy!
No, 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 you weren't supposed to, no, you weren't supposed to. My wife's gonna murder me.
That's it, Jimmy.
I told her it was gonna be a high cut. No, that's my scalp! I can see my scalp! I can see my scalp!
No, but it'll grow back. It'll grow back. Jimmy, Matt, look at that! No, it looks good! No, stop, 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 stop. It looks good, Jimmy!
It's not that much worse, Jim.
I know, it's really not.
There's just one little, like?
Alex, I think we could go just a bit here.
I know. I feel like we can go a little shorter, but Jimmy's crying.
Just even it out.
Okay, here, I mean, let's.
There's girls with BPD that like this kind of, uh, man.
There are people that like this. Here, Lila, you, I'll hold the mic.
Okay, I'll make it even.
Okay, she's gonna even you out.
I'm gonna make it even.
Thanks, sweetheart.
Oh my gosh. Jimmy, what a good producer. Jimmy, thank you so much. Jimmy, you're the best producer in Blaze TV history.
We're evening it out.
It's almost like he's standing in solidarity with little people with a little slice of hair.
I know, a little slice of hair, and this is why we have all shapes and sizes.
So inclusive here.
This is the most inclusive show on The Blaze, I would say.
Even it out.
I'm feeling prejudice just like seeing your team.[1408.86]